Have their entry feedback, any funds that they raised in terms of sponsorship goes directly to their team to come back here to the Garrett County community. And any cash awards that teams win as a result of their participation also comes back to Garrett County to help support the cause. As I've mentioned, the program started in 2007 and since that time, it has generated over 3.2 million dollars to come back to all the communities in our service area. We have often found that nonprofits and charities have a difficult time raising critical funds and this has just kind of become a grassroots way for them to get the critical funding that they need. To come back into their communities, it serves as a great networking opportunity for them. And it's also a great way for folks that already have a fund established with us to raise funds to go back into their endowed funds to continue contributing to the community. In the handout that I provided for you, I've given you some statistics for your total amount pledged since 2014. You have invested seventeen thousand dollars in the Run For It program and since that time, your teams have been able to bring back 286,546 dollars to your community. I've given you a five-year snapshot of that as well. In the last five years, Garrett County has invested ten thousand dollars to run for it. And that's been able to generate twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty-three, twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars to come back. And last year, you pledged two thousand dollars and your teams brought back seventy-eight thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Since in the past five years, Garrett County has had twenty-three teams and four hundred and twenty-nine participants from your community come out to David and participate in this race. Which is pretty impressive for folks together. We've had, this last year, we had a lot of fun with your teams and I've listed them as well. It was a very energetic group and they were very competitive with one another. I had a lot of phone calls from them. I loved working with them. They were really great to participate this year and they had a huge turnout. So I really applaud all the folks from Garrett County that came out to run for it this year. They were all in, in the event. So it was really great to have them and their participation. I'm also including in your packet, other ways our foundation is able to benefit Garrett County. I've listed an unrestricted fund, several unrestricted funds, as well as a restricted fund that can, that can provide funding for things here in Garrett County. And I've also given you some statistics about our most recent grant cycle as well as our scholarship cycle in 2024. In 2024, Garrett County retrieved one thousand fifty dollars in grant funding. One of those was two hundred and fifty dollars for the Garrett County Public School Foundation. And the other one was an eight hundred and fifty dollar grant for the Swan Meadows School for the PBIS program. In 2024, there were ten Garrett County students who were awarded scholarships from our foundation and those scholarships totaled seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars. So we have a lot of growth happening here and interaction with the foundation in Garrett County. Recently, Coop and Taylor were here visiting folks. We had a nonprofit session where we invited folks to come out from all the nonprofits and charities in your community. It was really great. It was well received and we look forward to more events where we can engage folks and get them involved with what's going on with the foundation in Garrett County. So this year, we would like to request your support again in the amount of three thousand dollars for the Run For It program. All money donated from Garrett County comes back to Garrett County. It will not be distributed to any of the other counties in our service area. It will stay here in your community. We'd also ask that you would encourage folks and nonprofits and charities here in Garrett County to participate. Sign up, give us a call, reach out, find out more information. It's a curious, fantastic way to initiate a critical fund. Again, we always encourage county commissioners to come and pay a visit to you. Come out that day if you'd like to participate. You are more than welcome. If you'd like to just see folks come out from your community in an amazing day, a great event. Last year, we had over fourteen hundred folks. And we were able to raise three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to come back to community. So it was a very well-attended event. The weather was beautiful. So I'd encourage any of you who can, come out and see yourself. It's a great community day.
The board has set out five thousand dollars to, we're looking for another organization or organizations that would really want to match the five thousand to start the ten thousand dollars that starts to start an endowed fund. So if you have any ideas of somebody who might be interested, do you have Angie's contact information? If you could pass those along to those, we'll reach out to them because we'd really like, the board would really like to see another fund started specifically for Garrett County.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. It's been a great partnership. Thanks. Okay, next item on the agenda is Purchasing Division bid award for the Wisp Mountain Water Storage Tank. Noel, what do you have?
Yes, sir. This is bid number twenty-four, one, two, oh, five, Wisp Mountain Water Storage Tank. We had, two bids were received, one from Blakeville Enterprises in the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. And one from Carl Belt Incorporated in the amount of two million, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. The purchasing department recommends awarding the bid to Carl Belt in the amount of two million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. This project is within our two-point-five million dollar budget.
Questions? All right, if there are no questions, I'll take a motion to accept the purchasing department's recommendation to award bid number twenty-four dash twelve, oh, five to Carl Belt in the amount of two million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. We have a motion, we have a second. Motion and a second. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the Garrett County Salary Study Review Commission recommendations. So for those of you that aren't familiar, every four years, we have a Salary Study Commission in Garrett County that entertains recommendations or requests from different agencies that are funded by county government to increase salaries or not. So those folks can make a recommendation to the commission. The commission listens to those recommendations and requests and then they make a recommendation to the commissioners. The commissioners at that point can either accept the recommendation from the Salary Study Commission, they can reject it, they can lower it, they cannot increase it. So if, in, in this case, I think there are five entities, one of which is the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. The Board of Garrett County Commissioners did not request an increase in annual salary. And, and just a point of clarity, any changes in salary don't take effect until the next board of any of these boards sit. So for the Board of Education, it wouldn't take place till after the next election. For the Board of Commissioners, it wouldn't take place till after the next election. Regardless of that, the Garrett County Commissioners did not seek an increase in salary. So the salary will remain at thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. There's nothing to vote on, on that. There was no request to change that. The Judge of Orphans Court, the Judges of Orphans Court for Garrett County requested consideration for an increase of five hundred dollars from sixty-five hundred dollars to seven thousand for the Chief Judge and from sixty-two hundred dollars to sixty-seven hundred dollars for Associate Judges. The Salary Study Commission did not recommend an increase for the Judge of Orphans Court for Garrett County. So the, the recommendation from the Salary Commission is no increase and to remain the same. Is there any disagreement on that? Next up was the Garrett County Board of Election Supervisors. The Garrett County Board of Election Supervisors requested an increase in salary. The Salary Study Commission recommended a salary increase from thirty-three hundred dollars to thirty-eight hundred dollars for the President and from three thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars for Board Members and the Salary Commission. So that, that's the Salary Commission recommendation is to increase five hundred dollars to both the President of the Election Supervisors as well as its Board Members. Recommendation is to accept that five hundred dollar increase. Is there any dissent? Hearing none. Next was the Garrett County Board of Education. The Garrett County Board of Education requested an increase in salary. The Salary Study Commission recommended a salary increase from five thousand dollars to fifty-seven hundred dollars for the President and from five thousand dollars to fifty-three hundred dollars for a Board Member. So the Salary Commission recommendation is to increase pay for the President, seven hundred dollars and each Board Member, three hundred dollars. Comment or dissent on the recommendation?
They just received a, a raise from us and I, I will not, I will not go with that recommendation.
All right, and, and that is correct. Four years ago, at the last Salary Study Commission, there was a request by the Board of Ed to do two things. I think one was to increase the pay of the President above the sitting Board, other Board Members and then to increase the pay for everyone, but to pay more to the President. And that was approved in the last round. So Commissioner Tishnall was raising some concern about that. Commissioner Savage?
Yeah, I'll agree with Commissioner Tishnall. I wasn't in the last raise, but I, I agree.
All right. Question, Mr. Noel. The Election Supervisors and the Orphans Court don't have regular public meetings, so obviously they wouldn't bring this up in a public meeting. Does the Board of Education bring up in their public meeting their intent to request additional salary?
Not to my knowledge. I've never seen that thing.
I, I would recommend and I'll, I'll speak with him directly that I think it would be best practice for them if they are going to ask for an increase in salary to do that publicly with a justification. Again, Election Supervisors, Orphans Court, Liquor Control Board don't really have that opportunity. They don't have meetings like we do and like the Board of Ed does. But I think if a board's gonna ask for a salary increase, there should be a public justification for that. So hearing dissent on the Board of Education increase than the, the recommendation of the Commissioners or the decree of the Commissioners is it will remain the same. And the final one was the Liquor Control Board. Garrett County Liquor Control Board requested consideration for a salary increase. The Salary Study Commission recommended a salary increase from twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars for Board Members. So an increase of five hundred dollars, and I think that's a three-person board. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
For the Liquor Control Board. Any comment, concerns, dissent on a five hundred dollar increase to the Liquor Control Board members? All right, so what I'll do then is I'll take a motion to accept the Salary Study Commission's recommendations for all of the Boards with the exception of the Board of Education, which will be no increase in annual salary.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Motion and a second. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Is there a report back to the Salary Study Commission then?
I will send them a notice of this meeting.
Can't find the blue pen. You got a blue one?
Yeah.
All right, and the final agenda item in the business part of the meeting is GIS Division Road Name Resolution. Looks like we have several road name changes on here. Sierra, I think you're introducing that?
Plug it in and I'll take you on a tour.
Thank you.
Is that gonna work?
That's great artwork. Did you do that?
That's, I can't take credit for that. Is that not gonna work today?
Does it show up on yours?
I don't see it. You plugged in?
I'm plugged in.
Okay.
I'm gonna email you the link, Kevin.
Oh, who would you try? Here. You have a thumb drive?
It's online.
Okay.
Actually, if you go to the public notification, like, there's a little map there. I'll send you the link.
Say it's on the webpage?
Yeah, you just got an email. It'll send it. Sorry about that.
Is it on your webpage?
It's, it's, it's the, on the public notification.
Okay.
It just said chat link in your email. But we have several new roads to add to the road index. Most of them come from subdivision requests. And so the first two are on TacMap sixty-seven and it's right off of, let's see here, Sky Valley Road. It's Azalea Lane and Magnolia Way. They're current new subdivision for pull and run. And then we have another one that's on Clay Lane. It comes off Gulf Drive. Are you bringing it up now? All right, well then I'll just explain it. So, and then there's another one that is Nature Run is the name of the road and that comes off Wisp Mountain Road. And then we have another one called Bogey Bend and that's coming off Blue Ribbon Road in Pleasant Valley, close to about fifty. And that'll change potentially two addresses that exist currently. The third address point is coming on, so that driveway has become a road. And then we have the last one, which is off Green Lantern Road. We had a new building permit that was like, that triggered the third building. So that is now Moon Ridge, will be Moon Ridge if you approve that. And lastly, there's a cross street and accident that there's two like, like, I guess like D-shaped streets, like they're like a bracket. And so then you had a cross street that was North North Street, Polk Street and Flat Street. It's kind of confusing. It caused some issues. So we're updating the North North Street portion to Polk as well as the Flat Street. So if you go across on that cross street, it's all Polk Street. So we're updating that and Polk Street will be extended. They're expecting a new subdivision there as well. So those are the changes that we're proposing and that if anybody had any comments, we can address.
Are all the people on these roads have been informed, especially if there's a address change?
Yeah, the, yeah, the Bogey Bend as well as the Moon Ridge. So those are the ones that would impact anybody's current addresses. So we've been in touch.
Any questions for Sierra?
Same, same question for the accident.
Yeah, so there was just two new houses that were built on the Flat Street portion and they've been having issues. There were some numbering issues, so we're resolving it by changing it to Polk Street. So hopefully this will resolve any confusion. So.
Is that in town?
Yes, it is in town.
So, yeah, just a point of clarity for myself, why is the, would the town not change that name?
The town, I've been in touch with the town and they're on board with it particularly because like there's, like I said, there's two bracket streets. I have the map, I can show you. But anyway, it just creates a grid for that street rather than having like curved streets.
But I guess my question is, isn't that's a town's responsibility to rename them, not the county, since it's in the town proper?
I've been in touch with the town, so I guess, I suppose we can do that. So it's gonna take off our list, but I should update it on the.
They just need to know that they'll have to do that as well.
I've been in touch with them first before I went through this.
Any other questions?
Mr. Fisher, I have one quick question regarding the Georgia Edwards Fund. We, we just funded Flat Street to have ten more additional lots put in there. Were those taken into consideration when you?
They'll be on Polk Street.
They'll be on Polk? They'll be on Polk?
Yeah, and actually, that, it'll be a straight line.
All right, if there are no other questions, can we have a motion to adopt the road name changes as proposed through Resolution RN 25-1?
Submove.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you, Sierra, very much. If I can get your signatures on that piece of paper, please. All right, just one announcement. Next public meeting is Monday, March 3rd, at four o'clock here. Also want to remind everybody, both in the audience and watching at home, the Deep Creek Dunk is Saturday. If you're inclined to participate or donate to that endeavor, please do. The Public School Dunk is Thursday, and all of the money raised at that does stay in county to support our unified sports programs in the Garrett County Public Schools, as well as Special Olympics Maryland in Garrett County. So if you're looking for a way to donate to that, you can see one of the students, contact the school, or you can participate in the dunk on Saturday, or the Community Dunk, which is Thursday night, which is kinda co-sponsored by the Chamber and the county, is another way to participate in that. So, lots of stuff happening there that's good publicity for Garrett County. So with that, we come to a time of question and comment. I know we have some folks who have indicated in advance they wanted to speak tonight. So, Mr. Van Backus, we'll start with you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is John Van Backus from Friendsville, Maryland. As you're meeting two weeks ago, the questions were just about Senate Bill 377, 399. And at that time, you indicated that we're not gonna take position for, we're not gonna take a position against. And I'm here to encourage you to take a position against the bill for the following reasons. First of all, that there was no open or transparent knowledge that you all had at all. I understand that you all were not contacted prior to the introduction of the bill by Senator McKay. It's a bill that directly affects Garrett County. This is not a statewide bill, it's a bill that affects your constituents, and I think it could cause a lot of problems. Farmers, land, I'll try to be as specific as I can here. Farmers, landowners, environmentalists and political leaders were not made aware by Senator McKay that this legislation was being considered for introduction. There have been no public meetings whatsoever, although Senator McKay says there has been 50 public meetings. I don't know about you, but I have never heard of, not even one meeting. And he has put on his social media, he has various social media platforms, and he has used that by saying we've had 50 meetings, which of course is untrue. The other thing that he mentioned is that it would have, it would have to disappoint, it would have had no effect whatsoever on farmers, which I think is, again, a misstatement and is certainly not the truth. The biggest concern that I have on this bill is that it's going to affect about 35 miles of transmission lines. I should've said that at the beginning, and bill has to do with transmission lines going through state forests, very protected state forests. There's some question as to whether or not it would also go into the Wild and Scenic Yachagane River corridor. There is no map. I've asked Senator McKay for a map of where this is gonna go. It doesn't exist, or I'm sure it exists, but we don't have it, and the public is not aware of it. And I think they need to be aware of it. Twenty-one miles of the 35 miles will be on public land. Twenty-one miles will be on public land, much of it farmland, much of it land that is in agricultural easements and other conservation easements. So this is a bill for Garrett County. Just in the last few days, both the Speaker of the House and delegates, and the President of the Senate, as well as the Governor, have said that we're gonna, that there's no determination that we really need these power lines, because they're actually looking at natural gas, nuclear, biofuel for a new power plant. All right, that's being considered now. Maryland has three nuclear power plants right now. One of them, I think it's one in Southern Maryland, I forget the name of it, is gonna be undergoing a hundred million dollar upgrade. So the question is, do we need it in the first place? And I'm suggesting that if we don't need it, that we don't need it. And I'm respectfully asking you all to take a firm position against this bill in the House bill, which has been cross-piled with Delegate Heimann. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie, I know you want to speak on the same topic.
I just asked for clarification, I don't want to comment. Senator, could you state the name of the bill?
Yes.
And exactly what it does?
Okay.
Okay?
Yes. The bill is Senate Bill 399, its title is Natural Resources, Wildland Areas, Overhead Transmission. Okay, and what it, what the bill does, it grants an exception to existing law that says you can't do anything in wildland areas. All right, but that's a simple bill, as to what it does. The, right now, there are prohibitions. Actually, the highest prohibition you can get in a state forest is for a wildland. I sponsored a number of the bills myself when I was there in the mid-1980s. It's hard to believe we're 40 years, and we're going back to get rid of some of these wildland protections. They are the highest protected lands that we, state lands that we have. This bill grants an exception to put high-powered lines through the forest again. That's the easy definition, I don't have a bill in front of me, but that's what it does. And I think.
No, exactly what we're talking about.
I believe we're not the only county that's wishing a fight in Carroll County that has the same problem. Carroll County's too far away.
Go ahead, John.
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, I don't know if you all have been following the situation in Baltimore County and in Carroll County. The law, heck, it's broken loose down there, there are tremendous protests going on for the same reason. And my research tells me that at this point in time, there's no need for it. All right, there may be a need in the future, but if the Governor and the leadership of the House and Senate are saying, "We're gonna build a new power plant," and they're upgrading the nuclear power plants, I don't see any need for it.
Are those protests from the same wire, the same high voltage fire? Did the protests in downstate?
Yes.
From the same project?
Same reason.
Not the same, it's a different project.
Basically, the same.
Annie, you're up.
So just quick point of clarity for that. Anne Britso, I live in, she's in Garrett County. There are high voltage power lines also coming down on the eastern part of the country that would go into Frederick. Deep lines would come from the west, they actually come through Morgantown area, and will come through both Garrett and Allegheny Counties, and head on over, go to West Virginia, parts of Virginia, and, well, start to Frederick. So they connect in the same place, but they're two different projects. PJM awarded two different transition projects, clearances. This one is Next Era Energy. I hope you can hear me through this mask, I'll probably, please, hold it down. So, related to what John said, in the press conference where House and Senate leadership in Maryland presented their energy bills, they said more energy generation in Maryland means more control for the state with numerous benefits, including less imported dirty energy from surrounding states, and fewer transmission lines impacting private property rights, farmland, and conservation easements. President of the Senate Ferguson said that. Yet Senator McKay is telling us that Ferguson asked him to put in this wildland bill. Quite a confusion, and I think one of the reasons we have some confusion is because John has said there's a lack of transparency with this. So Next Era Energy Transmission, that was awarded the project from PJM in 2023 in December, has had an entire year to meet with folks. And John and I were on a phone call with their project manager and their head lobbyist, and they said that they have met publicly, well, they said they've met with public persons, but they have not had a public meeting. They have met with several and state and local officials, county commissioners, I understand individually as you all, not as a group. Mayors, emergency responders, Maryland Historical Trust, and the Shore County Research Program of DNR, who have handled this project. So they had a year to do a lot of meetings. My understanding, they said to us on the phone call, "We have a map for the project, but we cannot share that yet." Meanwhile, we have heard that they are approaching property owners in Garrett and Allegheny Counties. We're also hearing people talking about unusual helicopter appearances next to the high voltage lines. This would have to be constructed adjacent to existing high voltage lines that are retained by the town association. What concerns me is the lack of transparency with this project. And the shrouded secrecy. Next Era Energy is already approaching landowners, putting pressure on people to sign easements. And it reminds me, a whole other one I'm bringing up here, I hope to bring up this sort of subject, during fracking. We had people who leased their land at five dollars an acre. In fact, that was the average of, of the, what most people did at the time. Some people got up to more like fifty or seventy-five dollars an acre. You're required to sign non-disclosure agreements, so you don't have a chance to find out what your, you can purchase and shopping if you will. People signed away the value of thousands of Garrett County acres because no one advised them to understand the monetary, natural, and intangible, intangible value of our land. Farmers and other private property owners are left to their own devices and the pressure of land agents when secrecy and urgency abound and when non-disclosure agreements are required. By trucking in secrecy, you not only place have the residents at significant disadvantage financially, subjecting them to predatory practices, you risk losing our goodwill for government. The Kansas Farm Bureau legal team has created a checklist for farmers to help them prepare for landage. At a minimum, given the secrecy to date, especially from Senator McKay and Delegate Heimann, I recommend you do the most you can to alert farmers and other private property owners in our county. And better yet, please take position against the wildland bill, as it is the lynchkin for Next Era Energy to make their transmission project profitable. If they can't get around these wildlands, or go through the wildlands and have to go around them, it's not gonna be a profitable project for them. Asset Health Bill 1270 to withdraw until it can be appropriate to public discourse. And as former Senator Van Backus said, find out who really is gonna need this thing. So I have this discrepancy with what Senator Ferguson said, that we wouldn't need as many at this point. I think we know far too well at this point, because it has not been transparent, uh, process. So thank you for participating, we appreciate it.
Steve, I think you want to speak on the same.
Yeah, I'll speak on the same, thank you. I'm Steve Stork, I'm a Garrett County resident. I testified last week on Senate Bill 399 for unsatisfactory review. I was here last week, or last meeting, to ask you guys to, you all, commissioners, to reject the bill or at least weigh in on that. One of the main reasons for me is that it undermines the CO-MAR regulations. The only way a change like this should occur in a wildland is by going through the Governor's office. When I was down there, there were five bills of nine that were presented by Secretaries of Departments, representing the Governor. That is the way that this should happen. So this bill really, you know, undermines protocol, undermines the law. You know, it was mentioned down in Caroline, Frederick County, the fight that's going on down there. The commissioners and delegates from that region are going to back for the property owners because of eminent domain, because of, you know, putting these things in farmlands and forests, removing thousands of acres of forest permanently from production. I think that you guys, you know, you've had a month. I don't know if Delegate Heimann let you know that he was submitting the bill. He said that Senator McKay did not, but, you know, two weeks ago Delegate Heimann submitted one. You've had about a month to think about this. If you don't feel like you know enough about it, I've done a lot of research, I have some time on my hands. So I did a bunch of research on this, and doing a webinar for Engage Mountain Maryland on Thursday night. If you guys want to attend and learn more, so you can make your, a good, informed decision. I'd be happy to, you know, to share that with you, or maybe personally do that. I guess one thing you did mention last time we met was, and Annie also said, that you had met with Next Era Energy. I'd be curious to know when that occurred. Because, you know, a lot of this is, now we find out that you all have met with Next Era Energy. The Chamber has met with Next Era Energy, the Farmers Bureau has met with Next Era Energy. But none of the property owners have heard anything about this. I stopped on my drive, I drove around, took pictures of transmission lines today, and stopped in a couple places and asked people. You know, just down the road, that you're gonna double the width of that, you know, potentially double the width of that power line? People don't know. Don't you feel like it's time to let the community, you know, engage them and know, so that they can find out what their rights are? You know, I don't want to say this, but are you on the side of the community members, the property owners? Are you on the side of the power line company? I don't, I don't know. I hope you're on the side of the community, or at least partners, I mean, you guys are brokers. Well, we'd like a community conversation about this. You know, Larry, I presume you go to the Farm Bureau meeting, I don't know. I asked the Farm Bureau President, I said, "I was surprised that he said that they had met with them." I said, "Well, was that a public meeting?" They said they had 50 public meetings. "Are there minutes for that meeting that I can review that? When did it happen?" No reply. Commissioner Savage, you know, a lot of this is potentially gonna take place in your district. Don't you feel like your property owners should know about this and know how people are gonna approach them? Ask them to sign NDAs, non-disclosure agreements? I think it's time for us to have community conversation about this. And I think we're really looking, we hope to have your leadership in that. That's really all I have to say. But I do hope to see, you know, on 6th of March, the Senate Bill 12W will be reviewed. We're trying to understand why it's in economic matters and not in the environment and transportation community. For all previous, why have any bills have been, anything dealing with DNR regulations are. So if we don't understand why it's in economic matters, we're looking at why, and trying to hit that chain. We really hope that you'll, you know, at least take position. You know, some people have said, man, I'll show up here in a second, that maybe don't value wildlands. I haven't valued wildlands. But as well, it wouldn't be so bad if they did it in the same footprint. So maybe that's your, that's your position is, you know, we're okay with this as long as they do it in the same footprint. That would be something, you know, that's a position. That's my position, because it undermines all 38 wildlands, 65,000 acres across the state, by allowing people like Senator McKay without any public notification to undermine a law. Thank you for participating.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments about power lines?
I just have a couple of questions. Is this the same high voltage project we talked about the last meeting?
Yes. Yes.
So, it's taking energy from Pennsylvania or Ohio and shipping it down to southern Virginia?
Uh, the DC area, northern Virginia, but yes.
Northern Virginia.
Yes.
It's like the data center?
Yes.
Data centers.
Okay. So, at that last meeting, you said you weren't aware that he was going to drop the bill. Do I understand from his comments and Annie's comments that you guys have been engaged in a discussion about this with him, with somebody?
No.
Well, what were they, he was said that Larry, that the farmers met with these people. Now, I don't, I didn't take his questions to be rhetorical. Can you give him the information he asked for, Larry?
We have some other people here that's going to make some comments, and then I'll make my comments at the end. If you're okay with that.
All right. But you guys met with them, all three of you, prior?
We, I said at the last meeting, Mike, we met with them individually several, well, a couple of months ago. I mentioned that exact same thing at the last meeting, Mike. And we did meet with them, and I said then, and I'll repeat, they gave us a hundred thousand foot view of, we want to run power lines from here to here, and they're going to come through your county, we just want you to be aware. That's what they told us.
That's basically all they told us. We had, at that time, they told us nothing about where it would run, anything about it.
So, the farmers didn't take a position?
Well, all the comments aren't indicated yet.
But, uh, do you have any other questions, Mike?
Well, yeah, I'm going to ask you three individually what the hesitation is to say, we don't want to endorse this until your constituents have input into this. I mean, talking to farmers and talking to businesses, sort of behind the scenes is one thing, but that's not the fifth. I don't envision that as the 50 public meetings the senator was talking about. I mean, they are, I guess, technically, but it doesn't engage the public. Like the other gentleman said, it's going to be impacted by this. So, that might, that's my next question to individually each of you. What's your hesitation to at least saying, before we take a stand, we need more information for our constituents?
Well, I think that's exactly what we said at the last meeting, almost verbatim, is what you just said.
Well, I guess I can pick up on the fact you guys have been meeting with them already and that they met with.
Well, let me clarify that because I don't think you're making an accurate statement. Is it accurate that we met with Next Era individually? Yes, which is exactly what I said at the last meeting. There's no hiding that or any effort to hide that. We met with them, we met with them individually. My meeting lasted all of ten minutes with them, and it was exactly what I just said. From that point until about a week ago, we haven't heard anything from Next Era. We did not hear from Senator McKay before he dropped that bill. When the bill was dropped and we found out about it and we reached out to the senator, his comment to us was, he recommended that we don't do anything with it. Since then, I have talked to a lot of people, which I'll elaborate on in a minute, to try to get more information because the last meeting, we said, we had very little information on what, what was going here, going on here. John and I had a good conversation on the phone a couple of weeks ago with the same concerns. We also said at the last meeting, and I'll reiterate now because I think it's very important, is this board of commissioners has been vocal and, and resolute in the fact that we do not support private enterprise having the ability to claim eminent domain. And we will fight that in, in every way that we can. I want to make sure that we're all under, that we understand what we're talking about here because there, there's two phases to this. There is the bill that's in place right now that would allow the power company, if the bill passes, to come through public land and into wild, wildlands. That does not mean that the project is going to happen or that it's not going to happen. If the bill's defeated, it doesn't mean the project's defeated. It'll go before the, the, what's the letter?
Public Service.
Yeah, Public Service Commission, thank you. It'll go before the PSC. Regardless of the bill that we're talking about now, they can still permit the power line. My sources tell me it's going to happen, whether it's through wildlands or not, but that's hearsay. And then if it doesn't go through the wildlands, then they're going to pursue other property owners and try to find. I think the reason no map exists is because the question is, where can they put it? What I can tell you is, and I've not seen a map either, what I have seen or what they've told me is, it'll come, basically exactly what I said at the last meeting, it's going to come essentially through Friendsville into Garrett County and then along 68 into Finsel, through some area in there depending on where they're allowed to go, and then it'll go from Finsel into Allegheny County, from Allegheny County, then down into West Virginia and, and eventually into Virginia. The other things that we found out since the last meeting, which we didn't know at the last meeting, that was brought up by, by one of the members of the audience, there is an off-ramp in Allegheny County. Power will offload in Allegheny County for this and its transmission, so there will be local power, whether that's good, bad, or indifferent, it is. Their estimate, meaning Next Era, is that the financial benefit to Garrett County over 40 years will be $350 million. That's a staggering amount of money, and we have reached out to them directly for specifics on that of exactly how they have come up with that number. As of right this minute that we're sitting here, we have not received that. We have received a response, but it is not as specific. I'm not comfortable with that number. Scott Weeks is not comfortable with that number until we have a more definitive, we calculated it by taking this percentage by this amount and this is what it will be. So, I can't sit here and tell you what that's going to be or, or anything else. I can tell you that the Allegheny-Garrett County Sportsman Club is signing on to support this project, provided that Next Era puts vegetation underneath the, the power lines, which I guess they have agreed to do. So, we'll see where that goes. And the question of whether Delegate Heimball said anything to us, Senator McKay did not. As we've said, Delegate Heimball did call me probably a day before he decided to drop the bill in the House, just to inform me that he was doing so. He did not ask for a letter of support or not. We had a long discussion about it and his reasoning is why. He can explain that to anyone that's interested. I'm not going to speak for anybody but myself. But he did reach out to us and, and did inform us that he was going to do so. So, that's what we know now. And, and, you know, more information to come as this thing plays out. I did speak with DNR. They have not taken a position on this. There is some conversation within DNR that if this goes through, there could be some financial implications due to federal dollars that were put into the wildlands program. So, they are, they, they have not supported or opposed it as they look into that. That question has come up. I don't know that if they will take a position. I think there's differing opinions within the administration of exactly what they think of this project. Maybe some of that's a confusion that you're getting from different people that are speaking. Has there been public meetings in Garrett County in relation to this? I would argue no. You know, have they met with folks? Sure. Are we going to classify that as public meetings? I'm not so sure that I would. They have assured us that they would do that. My guess is, and I don't want to speak for them either, but my guess is, they're waiting to see what a potential path might be before they would have that so they know who to speak with as far as direct property owners. That's my conjecture completely. They did not say that to me. I'm just trying to figure out why they wouldn't have done that at this point, especially with everything that's going on in Carroll, Carroll County. And, yeah, I mean, I speak to my counterparts downstate, and there was a lot of reaction to the, the effort of another company to run power lines through Carroll and Frederick and down that way into northern Virginia. Eminent domain was a big piece of that, which we share that concern. And I, I agree, Annie sent a, a pretty good, I think it was from Kansas, you know, sort of frequently asked questions or points of emphasis for property owners that could be impacted. We just sent something out through the Farm Bureau not too long ago, very similar to that in relation to solar panels. The last thing we want is for the citizens and, and Mr. Stork, to your comment, we're always on the side of the citizen. You know, you and I may disagree on most things, but, you know, we're still going to try to look out for the citizen. And if the power line is permitted, you know, we'll take it, we'll do everything we can in our power to educate people so that they're not taken advantage of, much like we're trying to do with solar panels as well. So, we'll see where that goes. Mr. Schaaf?
Yeah, I'm new, I newly arrived at this discussion point, so if this question has already been answered, let me know.
Sure.
An inappropriate question, let me know. We seem to be far down the road in something that has potential impact without having gotten a lot of public comment, public input. Yeah, there's been one-on-one meetings, running with the providers here. What specifically in layman's terms does this bill, that's talking about being introduced to the House and Senate, what is it authorized? When everything's said and done, with those currently structured and a vote is taken, let's say it passes, what happens then? What have we signed up for, what have you signed up for?
It would allow, what the bill does does not permit, and this is the point I can't emphasize enough. The bill does not permit the project to take place, period, hard stop. What the bill does is, if it is permitted, it would allow them to construct the power lines in state, on state ground, in state forests, including areas right now known as wildlands that have a different level of protection. That is the best, that, that in layman's terms, it would allow a potential path for that power line to travel through state-owned properties. It, and it's specific to what those areas are. If you read the bill, it's, there's four or three specific places that currently are designated as wildlands that it would allow this, allow a power line to come through. When I spoke with Next Era about that, it, I don't think it says this in the bill, John, but it, Next Era says they would stay adjacent for as much as they can, but apparently there's also a rule that you can't be within, I forget, 100 feet, I think, is the number of another power line. So, there are places where they might have to deviate from that. Basically, in layman's terms, what the bill does is it would allow the power line to be constructed in state forests. If the bill fails, it does not kill the project. The project can still go through. What that would mean to Next Era is they would have to find an alternative path. To Annie's point, and I think she's absolutely right, it would be more expensive, and in which case, they would be dealing with private property owners, trying to work out deals to allow a project to go that way. But it would still stay, one thing that I'm, I'm very confident in saying is that I don't think there's any scenario where the power line cuts through to the southern part of the county. Everything that I've seen and heard from the delegation, from the power company, and from the lobbyists, is it's basically, it's going to be in the northern end of the county, basically along the I-68 corridor for the most part, and the question is, is it going to go through state-owned land to some extent or, or isn't it?
Just one other question, excuse me. The data center that is the terminal point of the power being ordered, is that a public entity or is that a private entity?
I think it's multiple, I, I think it's more than one data center. I think it's the, the data center construction that's overtaking northern Virginia, and they need as much power as they can get. And both of these projects, the, the Next Era project here and the other one going through Center, Maryland, basically are aimed at getting power from those points to northern Virginia to serve those data centers. My guess is the vast majority of them are private and are private. Yes.
Just to clarify again, though, the recent comments just in the last few days by the governor and the leadership of the General Assembly said, we may not need this power if we're going to boost up nuclear power and build another power plant. That was only in the last few days. So, there's some question as to whether or not we need it at all. Point is, none of us know because there's been no public discussion about it. We don't know. Your questions are excellent, but who knows?
Yeah, and I tried to say a point, and I don't know everything about everybody, but I, I, I was still this past week, I hadn't heard of this. I know years ago, PJM was on, but it took every repotting power going through Garrett County. There was a lot of public dialogue. I'm surprised and a little disappointed that the first time we're hearing about this, we're two weeks away from making a go-no-go decision. And most of the Garrett County population, I would say, if you ask them, they would, they would think.
What?
Well, let me clarify again, Frank, because it, the, the go-no-go decision is not being made through this bill. That, that is a separate conversation altogether, regardless of this bill. What this bill would do is allow the opening up of that state ground and probably give, regardless if it passes or fails, it's probably going to give clarity to Next Era to clearly define more where the projected route might be. Again, I don't want to speak for them. That's their story to tell. Annie?
Another point of clarification, and one that Senator raised about why the public needs to know, especially farmers and private property owners, if you sign an agreement now, a contract, that, that stays with that land. It goes to your heirs, and if this private is not approved, then Next Era can sell that contract to the highest bidder for other purposes. They're going to have easement on your land, and that's what people need to understand now because land agents are out here now talking to property owners. I know of two people who've been approached in Garrett or Allegheny County. The other thing that I think is fascinating is, John and I were on a phone call with Kaylin McFarwick, the project manager, and I can't remember the name of the lobbyist woman who was on with us, and I asked specifically, I said, do you have a map for this? Yes, we have a map, but we can't release it yet. How do you specify that? She'll need DNR and NDE. No, nobody's seen it yet, but we have this map. Furthermore, we're going to send postcards out at the end of February to all property owners within two miles of their map transmission line. And after the postcards go out, we're going to have public meetings where we set up and she, this whole elaborate thing, that's what we experience, the public meeting. They have a little, you know, this little booth, you go here, and this little booth, you go there, and no one ever gets to hear the same talk at the same time, and they, they're going to do that all over the place. So, they have their probably best type map that goes through the wildland. In the bill, if you see this map just out, if you read the language in the bill of what it would be adjacent to, is it adjacent to the existing, the existing, um, you got some lines? And you can see, I mean, you could, you're covering those ways, you can map it out and actually see whether it's an initial.
Yeah, and, and they certainly will be, and I think the point's been made, these are much bigger power lines, so the infrastructure is going to be noticeably larger than what currently exists.
One more comment. The route that you described, that they told you, does not go through mystery wildlands going along 68, going through Finsel, going down through Allegheny.
Well, let me, let me clarify. I'm not, I'm not saying it's going to follow 68. Basically, what they told us was it would be in the 68 corridor. So the way that I understood that was the northern part of the county, you know, and they did tell me, uh, in, in my ten-minute conversation, it basically would enter around Friendsville, run kind of along 68, probably close to Grantsville, down through Benninger, and then out, uh, you know, the Southern Finsel area. But, again, no map, to, to your point. Is there, are there any other questions or comments, Billy, related to the power?
Uh, just to be clear, I'm Billy Bischoff, the president of Garrett County Farm Bureau, it's Paul. But I'm going to go first, and you may chime in and help me out some. You're all wondering how farmers are feeling about this. Well, let's unpack this. We've had a rather extensive discussion here. Uh, and, you know, let's start at the beginning. You're saying that this discussion process has started in an unusual way, and that you feel like you've been left out. I have a different opinion. I just think it hasn't started yet. But Annie, you, you bring up a very valid point, which I would like to have an answer to. If they have started approaching property owners for right-of-ways before the public discussion has started, then something's wrong and they should have been held accountable. But I'm fairly confident that it will start with postcards and a whole series of public hearings. They will probably go on for years. Now, do the farmers want a power line that we don't need? Absolutely not. And we are as opposed as anybody else is here if this is a power line that we do not need. But we can do math. And if you follow through with the government mandates that are already on the books in Maryland, that will be carbon neutral by 2050, that means you're going to electrify your transportation system. You're going to electrify all the other things that you do with fossil fuels. And that will triple the size of our electrical grid that we have now. Triple the size of the generating capacity, triple the size of the transmission, triple the size of the distribution. That's just the numbers as they work out for anybody that can do numbers. Then, in the last couple of years, we've started this discussion about data centers and AI, which is adding this vast extra amount of electricity on top of what we're using now. So if you start paying attention, there's a vice president from Dominion Power that's saying, "Hey, we're, Dominion Power is now looking for ways to do nuclear because they're estimating that their power usage will go up eighty-five percent by 2035." Now, how do you all figure that's going to happen without more transmission lines? So, to the proposition that we don't need this line, I question that. Because if you just follow the numbers, we're going to have to transmit a lot more electricity. And if you're going to do it from renewable sources like solar, that's all going to occur west of us. So the long-term plan of this line is to carry solar energy from Ohio and those western states into the northeast, so that eventually we can shut down the coal plants. So the farmers are firmly opposed to a line we don't need. But if you look at the government mandates, we feel there's a good chance that, you know, no one's advocating building a project like this if PJM doesn't think that they don't need it. And there's no farmer out there that wants to go into a future where we don't have reliable electricity. Who wants to live in a society where you have rolling brownouts all the time? I don't. So if we have to have more transmission lines, that's a consequence of the way that we're going. Now, on the specific topic of this wildland split, all this does is permit them the ability to put install this transmission line across wildland. The Farm Bureau is going to support that bill because we do not perceive that wildlands are more important than our land. So if we're going to have, have a new transmission line, we want it to go in in the most efficient path possible, and that may be across some wildlands. But to have it deviate and exclude it from wildlands and take up more of our farms, we do not see the logic of that. And there is a large area of common ground here today. Farm Bureau has policy that we need to reevaluate how property owners are compensated for these right-of-ways. And the historical method for that is at the beginning, they either buy the land for the right-of-way or they buy an easement for the right-of-way. The problem is these right-of-ways, as someone pointed out, may be there for a long time. There's a right-of-way across our farm that's now been there for a hundred years. It was built to take the power away and supply power to deep-frequented. Now, it happened so long ago that we have no idea how much was paid for the right-of-way or what the terms of the agreement were, or nothing. It, it's antiquity. We now have, uh, examples of easements being grounded on by farmers in a free market to provide electricity. We've got farmers that, uh, have contracts to provide locations for windmills and solar. And in the non-electrical environment, uh, communications towers. We think farmers should now have the option to ask for leases for these. And if you're paid for a tower on your property, it should be in an equivalent manner as if you had a wind turbine or a communications tower. And it should pay every year, and it should escalate with inflation. You know, standards that we are familiar with, with other types of projects, and you would certainly advocate. That is common ground. We'd like to see this done better. And maybe the, maybe the landowners would choose to just go with a fee simple right-of-way sale, and that's their choice, but we think they should have the option to do it differently. So, if I've been clear, I shouldn't need to summarize.
I just asked you a quick, a question of clarification. I think I probably agree with most of what you said. Farmers should have control over how they're using their land. How is the, where's the initial energy come from when these things are, are, are put into operation? You talk aspirationally about, well, in the long run, we're going to get solar and things like that. Where does it come from originally? Does it come from?
It's coming from coal. They're, they're coming from coal power, fire power.
Coal, so they're coming from coal plants in Ohio?
Ohio, southwestern Pennsylvania.
The line starts at a service station in Mount Morris, PA, and ends in, um, Frederick County, Virginia.
Yeah.
They talk about the aspiration of being, um, um, carbon neutral. This is not going to be carbon neutral, it seems, in the first couple of years. It gives a new life for the coal-powered power plants, if I understand that right.
But I cannot defend or comment on that.
So, otherwise, I, I wasn't, I don't really disagree with too much of what you said there.
Okay. Paul, you want to?
Well, there's a question here.
Billy? I, I, again, I agree with most everything you're saying, but I would question one of your assumptions, Billy, and that is, we have seen this carbon-neutral date move from 2025 to 2030 to 2036, and you just used the term 2050. You and I both know that who the heck knows what's going to happen in twenty-five years? So, you, you know, while we agree with farmers should, should get anything and everything that they possibly can, and energy companies are not known for being really good friends with farmers. And if you look in other states, you're going to see that. We saw during the wind turbine thing, Billy, you may remember, there were lots of hearings during that situation in Garrett County. And there were lots of easements and leases and so forth that took place until the attorney, the attorney general sent two assistant attorney generals up here who voided most of the contracts, because the farmers were signing them without legal advice. And that's something that I, I've never forgotten because I was involved with that. But, but again, you know, the farmers need to be protected. These, these legal agreements, you may be the exception, but I, I mean, I looked at some of those agreements. I couldn't figure them out. And I, and if I were, if I were a farmer, I darn well want to have a lawyer looking at those things before you sign your life away, but.
I agree, and I think this is common ground between the Farm Bureau and engaged mountain Maryland, is that, you know, we do what we can to, you don't want to say educate people because that assumes that you're superior, but give them the opportunity to learn and be informed. And I will start to say again, we are opposed to a power line we don't need. We're just looking at the situation thinking, there's a good chance this is going to happen, and that's beyond our control.
So, uh, Paul, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I'll just add a little bit. I mean, we're, we're definitely looking at, at, um, the opportunity to, uh, for, for the Farm Bureau to be able to help out all the farmers that we can, and with this. And I thought just for the, the memo you just put out on the, on the solar panels too, that gave the information out there, and we forwarded that out to all of our, all of our members also. And, um, I think we can do something very slimmer to that, um, in educating our farmers on the right note. And if there is someone in particular, as you know, that has been asked about this, I'd like to know their name and talk to them to see what contract that they are seeing right now, because I'm not aware of any farmer that's been approached about any of this at this point.
I think, uh, one thing, uh, to add to that, and then we're going to move on. Again, not to, not to confuse the process. So we're, this conversation started with a bill to open up the wildlands, and, you know, then it's evolved into the project itself, which again, is not dependent upon that particular bill. But I think, Billy, you brought up something that I think is very important. Regardless of this wildlands bill, just forget that exists for a minute. As this moves forward to, uh, the PSC for permitting, I think what you brought up with farmers' rights and landowners' rights, et cetera, I think we should work together, uh, to craft language to submit to that hearing that brings up some of those points, uh, to request that it be looked at in the same vein as some of these other projects, rather than the old, the old manner of, of right-of-ways. And when we get to that point, and we're not there yet, um, I would ask Kevin that you get with Billy and the Farm Bureau, and we craft some language that we can submit for testimony, and we can work together. And Annie, if you want to be part of that, and John, I, I think the more the merrier to, to engage in that process would, would be valuable. And then anything we can do, uh, in advance of that, in an educational standpoint, uh, back to the, like we did with solar panels, if there's something we can do and, and maybe mimic some of the, the Kansas stuff that we can put together that would help educate. The last thing we want, somebody to sign something that's not going to benefit them at the end of the day. So if we can get some information out, um, I think we're more than willing to assist with that and, and help with that, so.
I know, one quick question. Public Services Commission, it's my understanding that part of the consideration on certifying a project is how many right-of-way agreements they already have. So if you do, if you participate in the process, at the end of the process, they've already approached a lot of the projects.
Well, no, and, yeah, and I'm not real familiar with that, but to your point, um, I think the, the educational piece to current landowners now, like, I don't think we wait for that. I think we can start that right now, especially if they're already being approached. And I've heard more than one person say they've received a postcard. The lobbyist, when I asked him to clarify the, uh, tax number, did mention that postcard, I think postcards have gone, at least some, so there, there seems to be some truth to that.
Paul, one, one last comment. Think about what just took place in the last hour or so. This was an excellent discussion. It was civil. We all, you know, asked each other questions. This is what should have been done before the darn bill was introduced. And so that's, that's a point I'm trying to make.
And that.
We look at the angst that a lot of people have gone through, well, farmers, everybody else, and why, why wouldn't we discuss this ahead of time?
As casual observer, I would say that the process just got pinched because Mike and Jim didn't know about this four or five months ago. So this is something that needed, to, to clarify this process over the next year, something needs to be attempted in the legislative session right now. And like I say, this doesn't permit the project. It gives them more clarity of where they might run the right-of-ways.
Billy, why would they put a bill in? I mean, I wouldn't put a bill in like this that has such far-reaching implications. I would never have put a bill in like this without having a public discussion, with farmers especially, and other people that have easements on their land.
It's been demonstrated that we can discuss this topic civilly.
Commissioner Titchell had some, some comments. Hold on, please. Go ahead, Larry.
Well, you've asked me why I haven't made comments, and right here's the exact reason why I haven't made comments, because I wanted to hear the other side. I really did. I called Paul the other day and talked with him about it. They did have a meeting, but it was a very informal meeting. No, there was no minutes taken or anything like that. It was just an informal meeting with the, with Allegheny and Garrett County Farm Bureau. I don't think there was more than five or six members there at that meeting. You know, I, I, I don't agree with the way it's been handled. I don't agree with that. But I, I really think that Bill made very good, uh, comments about if this bill fails, I want to make sure that, because I, I, I truly believe they're going to put this transmission line somewhere. And I don't want to see eminent domain taking over farmers' properties. I want to know, Annie, I did read what you sent, and I'll tell you what, it was very good, uh, points in that, and I appreciate it very much that you sent that to us. But, and, and we need to get that out to the farmers, that, that, because, uh, John, as you said, with the windmills and all, and I have two windmills on my property, uh, I've been very fortunate. I've been, I've worked with them very well. Everything is good in my book with the company that I'm with. I'm not saying that for some of the other companies. But it could be the same with this transmission line. Um, I'm worried if it doesn't go through maybe the wildlands, that then it's going to go someplace else. And I want to be very sure, very sure that the farmers are protected in this. And, uh, not signing leases. And Paul brought up to me a very good point, and Billy brought it up in his presentation there, about a right-of-way, you, you sign a, a right-of-way piece, and, and if it's not something every year to you, you know, it'll go away thirty, forty years from now. You don't, you, you won't know anything about it. Whereas, uh, if, if you have, as I do, a, a lease with this company, uh, they pay me every three months. And, uh, I would like to see that if this happens. I would like to see that for the farmers, that this might go across their property. I want to see them compensated for the loss of, of land, because there's going to be some loss of land. You know that. So, yeah, I've been hesitant about it. I admit that. But I didn't want to. But I didn't wanna say something that I would have to regret later. And that's my stance on it. So I understand your commitment to the wildlands, I understand that. But I hope you understand my commitment to the farmers, and that's why I'm asking. And I agree with you that this has been... Bill, I'm so thankful for you and Paul being here today. Thank you so much for coming here, because I couldn't have put that out the way you did.
Commissioner Savage, you got anything you wanna add to this topic?
It's the same thing. I'm obviously not a good speaking... It's just not what I do in front of crowds. But my stance on this, Billy said, the best part of what Billy said to me was, if the power line goes, I would rather it not be pushed out of state lands and onto farmers' lands without something in place. And that's why, again, I have taken no position. I just, there's nothing... Like you said, I value the farmers' lands, I value the wildlands, and I appreciate you fighting for them, I do, but I wouldn't want to try to force out a bill that forces it onto the farmers.
Thirty-five miles, if it goes through wildlands, two and a half miles wide, 24 miles of those 35 miles lead on farms. If it doesn't go through the wildlands, it's probably about the same.
All right, we're gonna... Annie, last comment on this.
I still wanna know why someone like Ferguson would say that if we get these energies, so they wanna... They got a bill out there, send it, and look it up, 0937 bill, that would allow the nuclear power plants, frac gas power plants, to be built in Maryland. And he's saying, well, if we do that, we are not gonna need these transmission lines. So what's the story here? He's saying that, but he's the one who encouraged McKay, asked McKay, along with Next Era, to submit the bill. You know what I think? I think it's premature to do this this year. I think we need to have an opportunity to study it, and I would like... I would love you all to take a position like that. This is premature, we're getting mixed messages here, nothing's been transparent. Why the rush, unless Next Era is trying to get as many easements as they can, so they can go to get it. I really appreciate your time. Billy, we haven't spoken together in meetings in a long time. And I appreciate it this far.
Don't grow old before we should talk.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on any other topics? All right, good discussion, thank you very much. With nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn. Me adjourn, thank you.